All right, while everybody's getting settled, if you can take a moment and look at your phone. Make sure it's on silent, vibrant, or turned off, please. And Mayor, we have some awards.
All right, here, if you want to stand here, I'll read on the podium to you.
All right, here, if you want to stand here, I'll read on the podium to you.
Okay.
This is a proclamation of the City Commission of Flagler Beach recognizing William Buzz Sawyer, fishing pier bait shop manager. Whereas Buzz has served and has been a goodwill ambassador for the city for 10 years, nine months, and whereas he has served as the manager for the city's pier bait shop, and whereas during his tenure, he has instituted innovative ideas such as redesigning and reconstructing the interior of the bait shop, building a recirculating area to sell live shrimp, and managing ticket sales for tourists visiting the pier. And whereas Buzz is an encyclopedia of knowledge about the pier and has dedicated his job to sharing his knowledge with the thousands of people who have visited the pier. And whereas his dedication to the city has further been demonstrated by his proactive actions to sell inventory from the bait shop before it closes on June 1st. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City of Flagler Beach on behalf of the entire Flagler Beach City Commission, as well as the citizens of our community, please accept our sincerest thank you for service and dedication to the City of Flagler Beach. Thank you. I'm going to read one more, and then if you would like to share any thoughts, please feel free. Whereas Buzz will be accepting this proclamation on behalf of the other bait shop employees, so I will go ahead and read it. A proclamation of the City Commission of Flagler Beach recognizing the City of Flagler Beach fishing pier bait shop staff. Whereas the City of Flagler Beach recognizes the service and dedication of our part-time employees who have worked in the city's pier bait shop. And whereas Kendall, Ken Williams, has served for 31 and a half years. And whereas Natalie, Nat Ventura, has served for five years, six months. And whereas Richard, we're just going to say Richard A., has served for four and a half years. And whereas Larry Quick has served for two years, seven months. And whereas Terry Porterfield has served for two years, five months. And whereas our part-time staff have provided fishing supplies, assistance, and information to the thousands of visitors who have visited the city's pier over the years. And whereas these employees have been vital to the operation of the City of Flagler Beach fishing pier and bait shop. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City of Flagler Beach on behalf of the entire Flagler Beach City Commission, as well as the citizens of our community, please accept our sincerest thank you for your service and dedication to the City of Flagler Beach. Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
This was always been an honor and privilege to serve Flagler Beach, and I wish the best of luck with the new pier. I think it'll be a very good success, and I just want to say thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for being my friend.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So next we got deletions and changes to the agenda. I have one, is there any? Commissioner Millie?
Just to move number nine to general business.
That's what I.
I think we have consent.
All right. We got, everybody caught that one. All right, so, well, we'll look at that as a motion and a second. And is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will move nine out of consent agenda into general business. All right, and City Manager, anybody else have anything that we need to move around? Okay. All right, and Commissioners, we can either do our CRA meeting now, or we can wait till after public comment? So you gotta wait till the actual time? Got it. All right, so we will wait on that. All right, we will move to public comments. Public comments are items that are not on the agenda. Citizens are encouraged to speak, however, comments should be limited three minutes, and please address them to me. And anyone for public comment? Come on up. If you can, please state your name and address.
Donna Snyder, 2412 South Daytona. I sent all of you an email earlier this week regarding a storm drain at the intersection of 24th and South Flagler, concerned that that wasn't in the project that was being done now. So I did get a response from Jane and Rick, thank you very much. Sue reached out to Lee, and we got some additional information, so I want to share that with you. So it turns out that storm drain was not on the plan, so it is not included in the current project. They went down, Lee sent somebody down to go ahead and check that and see what size it was, determined it's a 12-inch valve needed there. And he has assured us that one of the valves coming in will be used at that location as a priority. I also found out that the as-built are incorrect, and a lot of the valves we've already ordered are the incorrect size. I know you at one point, I think February or March, said you wanted to get a proposal for the additional valves that are needed. So we may be able to use them for that, but this is a pretty big mistake that nobody verified what sizes we needed to order before we did that. Also, while one of the valves was being installed, my husband and I went to see what the existing conditions were, and this is just an FYI. The cooperator that's installed there is on the wrong side of the box. It's on the supply side when it should be on the discharge. So basically, what that means is it's a wide-open pipe from the intercoastal to come up. Any storm drain has got to discharge if they're all installed that way. So that was a bad mistake in the original installation. The new guy said he would be putting the valve on the correct side, so that part is hopefully solved. I think probably we have need to learn a lesson here. One thing is, have we verified, these are my questions, have we verified the sizes that are in this project now? The ones we do not have, have we ordered them? Because we don't want to delay this project any longer than we need to. And our lesson learned here is we should be verifying anything before we order any remaining valves. I think we might want to look at whoever did those original management of those projects and maybe not use them again, because they didn't serve us well on that one. So I also want to offer my services. Sounds like we got a whole bunch of drawings all over the place. They don't have all the information, and that's how we got in the situation where this wasn't included. So I have the capabilities to do AutoCAD, or to do it manually, take all of your drawings, put them on composite drawings so the city knows what they have. Just want to offer that service to you guys.
All right, thank you, Donna. Anyone else for public comment? Come on up. Please state your name and address.
Erica Rivera, 209 South 15th Street, Apartment 1. So real quick, my name is Erica Rivera. I've been a resident of Flagler Beach for a little over 15 years, and diversity, equity, inclusion is really important to me. And really, I'm just here to let everyone know that I was recently voted in as president of a local pride organization in Flagler County, and we're holding a Pride Festival on June 10th at Town Center in Palm Coast. But we will be having a vigil here at Veterans Park in Flagler Beach for the Pulse victims. We honor them every year, and I know that you guys have been included in that every year, and I just wanted to thank you guys for that inclusion. And that concludes my comment.
What date did you say?
So June 10th is the Pride Festival at Town Center in Palm Coast, and then June 11th, the very next day, is when we're having the Pulse Vigil here at Veterans Park, and that's from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We usually choose that evening timeframe to light candles in honor of those victims.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Erica. Anyone else for public comment? All right, so you know we'll close public comment. City Manager, so we have a lot of questions that have been brought up, and we'll just go down these in order, just to get clarification for us as well. So valves coming in that are the wrong size, do you have comments or thoughts on this?
We are checking. She's, Ms. Snyder is absolutely correct. There was mistakes in the, what we thought was the valve sizes and the valves that were ordered. We're checking the valves that are ordered to see if those are compatible with, in fact, the valve locations that we have identified. That's being done today. I don't know what the results of that evaluation are, so that we can make whatever modifications we have to make in the valves that have been ordered. So that's underway. She's correcting that.
And the next, the next item that was brought up was there, there's now a valve that is getting moved to a new location. My concern with that is that means that on the contract, there's another location that's going to be left off, and we have contract changes, and if we're going to just move a valve, what happens to the location we identified as a priority? And what about the contract?
We would have, there's a number of different locations where valves could potentially be located, so that's not the only valve that probably is going to have to be ordered as we go through this process. So what we're doing right now is trying to match, get firm identification of the pipe sizes, and part of the problem is these pipes are submerged, and so there's been some miscalculation on what the pipe sizes were. But if it's missing, we will end up trying to order additional valves so that we can cover what the valves we had said we were going to do. That's part of what we're doing today with the shipment coming in.
Okay, and the next item that was brought up. Absolutely.
I know that we've said that this valve would be moved to this other project if it was the right size.
That's correct.
So nobody is saying that here. Okay, it's sounding like we're definitely doing it, and we're not definitely doing it because we don't know if it's the right size yet.
We've determined the size is 12-inch, and we determined there is a 12-inch valve.
Yeah, that would be. Just want to make sure that was in there.
Right. And did that answer your question?
It wasn't a question, it was a statement.
I got one too, and you get break.
All right, well, I'll tell you what, let's cover the public's concerns, and then we'll just, because this one's probably going to have a lot of comments on it. So the next concern was the valve being installed on the wrong pipe. What is your take on that?
I really don't have a take.
It's on the.
It's on the supply side instead of the discharge.
And she mentioned it was corrected, so if.
Yes, the new install at that location is correct.
It was initially done, when the project was initially done in 2007 or whenever it was, it was put in the wrong position at that point in time, not.
Okay, so the new valves are not being installed wrong.
Correct.
The old valve was installed.
It was an old valve, yeah.
The original was in there wrong.
Got it. All right, that makes a little bit more sense. So you already answered, have we verified the size question on that? Have we verified the size?
Of which one?
Of the ones that are coming in, I would guess.
That's, no, we were doing that today, I have not gotten the results of that, so that's what we were ensuring with the shipper, what size valves they had to conform those back to the dimensions of which we have identified to ensure they're the right ones. I do not have the answer to that.
Okay, and that also answers the next question, is have we ordered? But we haven't done that because we don't have the size locked in yet.
We've ordered, as you know, we had nine on the way. Those are, we still have those ordered. The question is, are those the right size for the valves that we need? And that's what we're trying to confirm, so if we have to swap any out, we can do that.
Okay, and I had a couple comments, and Commissioners, I know, you all got Commissioner Bell here?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to that particular storm drain that Donna spoke of. I stopped by to see Lee Richards before our last meeting, or before he did his stormwater presentation, and I was speaking to him of that particular storm drain. And then he got out the plan, or the as-built drawing that he had, and it wasn't even on it. So when it was, when that project was originally done, it wasn't even marked onto the drawing that it was there. So that's how it got missed in this thing, because it wasn't, it's not on the drawings. And speaking of drawings, we used to have a large binder with all these full-size prints of every, every project that was done in this stormwater master plan.
I gave my copy of it to Lee, so he should have.
Was it this big?
Yeah, it had it all folded up in the binder.
Well, it disappeared somehow.
In 2009.
He lost it. So.
That's nice.
I just don't know whether that's something we can put back together again, so we have a better idea when we go to these other spots, what it was supposedly, what it was in its original state. So they're out there somewhere.
Is your mic on?
Wasn't it the 2009 I showed you from my office?
That was the, that was the stormwater master plan update. That's when they, they had all but the last four done.
Yeah, that was the 2009.
Right, but then that binder was updated to include those four, so the whole, the whole city was in that one binder. And be helpful, moving forward to have that.
When the engineering department moved over to Wickline, a lot of the documents weren't taken with them, and they are boxed in one of the closets here in the back of the room. So I've got several boxes of information.
Okay, but anyway, that, that particular drain happens to be one of two or three of the really important ones that really, that the water comes gurgling out of first. So that's why that one's of such high priority, that's getting changed to do that one. So I just wanted to explain that.
Okay, other thoughts, questions? Commissioner Sherman?
Go ahead, Eric. Okay. So I guess my first question is, we've talked about July 1st, are we still, are we still on target for July 1st to get, see this through? Or are we not tracking on that goal? I believe we kind of touched, I know that was like a touch date we had last meeting.
What an answer to that would have to be based upon what we determined today as far as the valve, any valves that were incorrect. Until I can get an answer to that, I really can't provide you with an accurate response to your question. I can provide that as soon as we know if the valves we have on order are going to be the right size, or if we have to reorder other valves in order to meet compatible with the pipes we have. So with, I hate to be ambiguous, but until I know what the results of that are, I just can't give you an accurate answer.
Got it. And then my last question would be, is there any liability for the improper installation of the pipes? I mean, you know, we're discovering this now, and if we would have had those installed properly, maybe we wouldn't have.
2007?
I mean, it's, okay.
And then Mike, my comment is, first, I wanted to say thank you, Donna, for volunteering your services. That's nice of you to do for the city. And Mike, if you can reach out to Lee and see if that's something that would be needed, CAD is a specific rare skill set, and it doesn't come along every day, so it might be nice to have someone that's passionate about a project in our city help us out.
It very well may be, as a matter of fact, you're right. I think we only have one person, i.e. Lee, that is an AutoCAD operator, so it very well may be.
Lee having a teammate might work out great.
We may have a volunteer.
It sounds like Donna's not going to let anything slip through the cracks.
Doesn't happen often.
So thank you.
So my comments are, I guess, are, are more concerns. So the, the first question is, is the company in charge of getting these measurements since it's their product? Or is it us? Or how does that process work?
The answer, you know, I'm, I'm concerned with giving you an answer because it's, it's more speculation on my part at this point. But typically that's what your engineering firm does. But I don't know how the process worked at the time of which those dimensions were calculated. So, and the answer that I gave you, um, would be what I think, not what I know. And I, typically what would happen is the engineering firm that you have under contract would be the one to give you the dimensions. But I don't know how that project was, was, was worked, was administered. So I could only, uh, provide that to you accurately at a later date.
Okay. So we can get that for that info, save for next meeting or something like that?
Yes.
And then you, I guess the, that's what I'm trying to figure out. You said that the drawings didn't have any measurements in them. So we got measurements from someone at some point in order to even.
They probably had a measure.
No, no, I, I didn't, I, I hope I didn't say that because that's.
Totally skipped one particular location where there was a storm drain. So it's wasn't on the drawing.
Yeah.
And then you said that there's going to be more valves ordered. Is it, did I hear that correctly?
No, I said that you would need to order more valves because of the locations. If we expand the project, you're going to have to order more valves. Right now, we've only ordered for a certain amount. For the one valve that is missing, in order to replace that and get another one, we're going to have to have at least one more valve in order to finish the project as it was. If we decide to expand the project, then we're going to have to, uh, order additional valves. But the thought is, let's, is, complete this project to see how it's working before you expand and do additional ones. To use this as a means of making adjustments in whatever we're doing and evaluating how effective it is.
So are you ordering the extra valve, we'll call it? Is that going to happen or is one dropping off of the existing project?
At, at this point, what my understanding is, we will try to attempt to order at least the one valve in order to make the complete for the one valve that is missing, but not to expand the project. Complete this project as it is with the valve that's been identified that was not on the plans. And then to evaluate how effective it is before we expand any other additional areas. Because the, the expense, let's find out if this works and it's effective before we, it's invest additional dollars, uh, in a project before we know it, that it works.
So one valve's being added and then we're going to pause. Is that your recommendation?
Yes.
Before we move on to another.
I wouldn't use the word pause to complete and evaluate.
And did we get the, was it the June or July 1st date answer?
Uh, he basically, the city manager told us that we would have a kind of a, you were speculative based on the measurements and such, right? That we were trying to figure out at this point in time. It wasn't.
Remember, we've got, we have got to make a decision whether the valves we have on order are going to fit the, the pipes.
Right.
Of which we currently have in the plans. Because, you know, there's different sizes being identified. So those have got to be, uh, in, any adjustments made at that particular point. So that's why I do not feel comfortable telling you that that July 1st date is good until we can sort out exactly what's happening with the valves that we currently have on order and the size of pipes, if we have to make adjustments in those.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to ask a comment.
Mayor.
How long is the timeframe to work out if the valves are right or correct to be used? Because my question would be, instead of waiting for the next meeting, is that something that you can let us know? And then also let Donna and Sue know, because I know they are eager.
Yeah, we, we would not stop the process that waiting for another meeting. I mean, I don't think we have to wait at this particular point. We have to make adjustments, if there has to be anything done, we have to make adjustments in the pipes that have been ordered. Or the valves, I'm sorry. The valves that have been ordered and make, and make sure that the right size, and if they're not the right size, to have them swapped out by valves that are the right size in whatever, uh, uh, transportation timeframe.
Okay.
Is involved in doing that. So nothing is going to, uh, stop at this point, you know, waiting on them. The meetings don't really matter. Uh, we will communicate to her based upon what the end result of that happens to be. But we're not, there's no delay that's being caused by waiting for meetings.
The delay is by getting the right parts.
Correct.
Right time.
Correct.
And I can, I, I definitely echo the citizens frustration with this project. It, this on the surface seems like a relatively simple thing to do that is becoming quite an issue. So that's why I was asking all those questions. I'm trying to wrap my head around where the gaps are on commissioners. All right. So I believe that answered all the questions from public comment. So we can close public comment up. And you want to move to CRA? All right. So we will, do we need to adjourn this, Drew, or no?
Adjourn, adjourn his commission and reconvene his CRA.
Look for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. And we will start our CRA meeting. So we'll call this meeting in order. This is a special meeting of the Flagler Beach City Commission, sitting as a community redevelopment agency. Today's Thursday, May 11th, 2023. Time is 5:59 PM. This meeting will continue until all items are complete. And we have approval of change order number three for the downtown decorative lights. CRA manager.
Thank you. As you are aware, the contractor discovered that some of the fixtures that were installed were holding water. So they stopped putting any of the fixtures up, sent one back to the factory in Ohio. They determined that the actual fixture casings, not the electronics inside, but the casings had to be completely redone. So we sent back the portion that were already still in boxes so that we could expedite things. And I know that you all were concerned that these weren't going to be brand new lights. They are brand new lights and we got that in writing. And I forwarded it to the city manager. So they are completely redoing brand new casings and sending them back. Once they get them, there's a five-day turnaround. The contractor has taken down the ones he did install. He's put them in boxes and sending them back to them. And after they receive them, there's another five-day turnaround before we get them back. So the contractor has asked for change order number three to extend the contract until July 1st. He feels that it'll be done a lot sooner than that because of the turnaround because King Luminaire is, is just on it right now. But just as a safeguard, if God forbid something else goes wrong, he's asking for July 1st and I'm recommending that we do that.
All right, commissioners. Commissioner Bell here.
Uh, there's polls out there where lights still on them. They took some of them down, but they left some of them up.
I don't know what, where they're at with taking them all down right now, but they're supposed to.
They taking them all down.
Yeah.
But they have, that's, but I'm okay with July 1st isn't that big a deal. Can't turn them on anyway.
Commissioner Sherman, did you have something?
No, I just.
All right. Opening this up public comment. Any members of the public wish to speak on this agenda item? See, no more close public comment. Look for motion.
Motion to approve change order number three for the replacement of the downtown decorative lights project.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Item three, approval of small redevelopment grant application for 212 South Ocean Shore Boulevard. CRA director.
Thank you. Atlantic Ocean Realty is wanting to replace their sign. They did get two quotes. And they are wanting to go, instead of going with the lower quote, they want to go with the one from Palm Coast Signs because if it's what they're looking for best. If you notice that the quote also says that the permit is not included. The owner has actually gone to the building department and asked how much the permit would be. It's $137 and has requested to amend the application to include that permit. If, if you so see so. So basically the application, instead of $600 or $595, would have an additional $137 to it.
And that fits our plan.
Yes.
We pay for permits.
So grants include permitting?
We can.
Typically they would be included in the contract price.
Right, usually it isn't.
That's why Karen pointed that out. And usually the contractor would pay for the con, would pay for the permit and work it in, Rick can tell you, and work it into their, work it into their, their price to use. So you're usually paying for them through the contractor.
And this is, uh, this is a hundred percent grant?
Yes, sir. It's under a thousand dollars.
All right.
But you said the application has been amended?
The original application was for 595. They wrote 600, but it's 595, which is the quote.
And we don't have the new application then, right?
Yeah, you should, in the packet. The application's on the front.
Right, the, the new one.
No, 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 this just came to me. I'm, I'm bringing it to you now. If you choose to accept the $137 in addition to it, that's your prerogative.
Commissioners thoughts?
Well, we'll have, it'll be documented, but I are public meetings, so I don't guess it needs a new application. Right? So.
So it's going to be the 600 plus the 137 permit, giving a total of 737?
It's actually $595 plus $137.
Okay. So 732.
The, the true definition of a small grant.
Correct.
So. I don't have a problem with it.
My thoughts are, I'm okay with approving what's in front of us. That's my thoughts. If, if this was something that needed modified and brought back to us, then it needs modified and brought back to us. Not, I mean, I, I personally am not okay with approving something that is just off verbal and there's no new application, there's no documentation or anything. That's where I'm at. But I'm one person. But I'm okay, I'm comfortable with what's in front of us.
But this, this application's already been approved, right?
No.
Oh, that's not even, not even the original was finished.
We haven't seen this one yet.
Oh, okay. Then I had misconception. I thought we had already signed off on the original.
No, sir. This is a brand new.
Yeah, so then I'm on board with you, Eric. Should be all all documented.
Or if a revision needs done, it can get revised and come back or something. But, you know, just to me personally, procedurally wise, I'm not comfortable with off the cuff, but I mean, that's up to.
The applicant is here if, if you want to talk to him, he just mentioned to me.
Oh yeah, let's hear from the candidate. Candidate? If you can't come up, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Ariel Orin and I'm the broker with Atlantic Ocean Realty. Now this, uh, permit. The problem was that the, uh, the guys, the sign company did not know for sure that they'll need a permit to start with because they thought it's going to be a reface and so you can do it without a permit. But in fact, I insisted on having a permit because I just, you know, we're working with the city, it's a small place and I just don't want any kind of question marks or everything. I, I'd rather do it, go over the top than, than, you know, do the bare minimum and make a mistake. So I just, I said, no, no, I want to do the, the permit. So that's why I did not have at the time that I put the, uh, application in, I did not have the price. So, but anyway, if, if you're not okay with, with doing the, uh, permit, that's fine with me. But let's go with just the, the sign itself. I'll pay for the permit out of my own pocket. That's okay with me. I have no problem with it. But we do want to proceed. We don't want any delays anymore because we, we just, you know, that sign really needs replacement. So, okay.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? Yeah.
My thought would be, first of all, Drew, is there any, uh, bar against making an oral amendment to a pending application?
No, there's nothing that stops you from doing that.
Yeah. I mean, so while you would be willing to pay for it, you wouldn't have a problem with including it in the grant instead, would you? I'd take that as a yes. So. I would make a, a motion to approve that subject with an, with an oral modification to add for the permit fee.
Well, I mean, we, we do it with ordinances all the time. Do an amendment and approve it as amended. So.
Yeah.
I was going to make the same suggestion actually, so.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Was there a motion?
Well, well, first we should have public comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm still, I'll be the odd person out. You know, this application was filed in, is that April I'm seeing?
April 5th.
I mean, and then the, you know, this, this, uh, quote was done April 3rd, says right on there, permit was not included. I just have an issue procedurally with, with these things. It's, it's not like we didn't know this was coming. It's all right there in the paperwork. And, you know, we can, we can approve it though. Commissioner Strata.
My thought would be that as a, as a general practical matter, I agree with you a hundred percent. But in this case, we have the explanation. We have the applicant here. We're talking about less than $200. He has a time constraint. Drew's confirmed that it can be orally modified. And it just makes sense that as a practical matter for the best use of all of our times, that that would be the way to go. Notwithstanding your concerns about it.
Any other comments? All right, we'll open this up public comment. Any members of the public wish to speak on this agenda item? All right, see, no more close public comment. I'll look for a motion.
You want to repeat your motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve the grant. Does it have a number?
It's for 212.
The grant for 212 South Ocean Shore Boulevard with an oral amended, amendment to include within it the permitting fee in the amount that was discussed.
I'll second that.
Harry, you have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That'd be me. All right. And, uh, motion passed four to one. And any other comments on CRA before you adjourn? All right, look for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Did you have something?
Yes, please, Mr. Chair, if I may for a minute. I just, I'm trying to update you on a couple of things, but mainly the fact that the CRA is hopping. Right now, we've got several applications for new development, redevelopment that are in the pipeline, pipeline. And, um, unfortunately, when I start telling them that they have to wait till June or they might have to wait till September for our regular quarterly meetings, they're not happy because time is of the essence for them. I do have one right now, which is in addition to a shed. It's, it, not a shed. It's a storage area next to St. Vincent de Paul. Anything that is added into a CRA property such as that, you guys have to approve. They've also had to, they wanted to apply for the grant. The problem is, they've already paid for this and it's being constructed. They did not know that you guys had to approve it ahead of time. So I'm going to have to ask you for one more special meeting at the next. at the next meeting in order for you all to address this, unless there's some other way or something else you want me to do. But that is the issue. And I'm open for suggestions, whatever you all want me to do. But right now, it's hopping.
Commissioners?
I'm good with discussing it at the next meeting. Have one of these special in the middle of.
Turn the commission meetings?
Well, my concern is, is in the application, it says you could not pay for the item before.
No, it doesn't say you can't pay for it. What it says is you can't do it before it's approved.
Okay.
So if it's not approved, they paid for something that it's not approved. So they're going to lose the money. I mean, Mr. Attorney, am I wrong with that?
No, that's, I think, why it came in the last one. The reason that says that in the application is so that they understand that they can't come to you and say, "But I've already paid for it, you have to give it to me."
Got it.
So if they've already, I don't understand. If the rules are you can't do it, what are we having a special meeting for?
There's two things, Kirby, I don't know anything about this one, but there's two things that are going on. You're talking, there's a grant application, but there's also other work, non-grant work, that they're doing.
No, it's the same thing. It's the same thing. And the work that they're doing, they've already paid for this and they didn't know.
But the work hasn't been done yet.
It hasn't been done. They've paid for the actual unit, but it hasn't been placed on the property yet.
And the unit is part of the grant?
They also applied for a grant to help pay for it. Yes. But what they didn't understand.
So they've entered a contract for the work, they haven't had the work done?
They're supposedly building it now, is what I was told. They were not aware that the CRA.
Building it off-site, not building it on-site.
Off-site, correct.
I think maybe that was the confusion. There's no on-site work occurring right now.
No, none.
So this is compliant?
Yes.
With the rules?
Yes. They did not realize, however, that you, as a CRA board, had to approve the addition to their property to begin with, not the grant. It's the addition to the property.
Why are they not on this special meeting? Instead of having another special meeting to then have another one? My thought is, is we're getting to the point, we're having a CRA meeting and a commission meeting every single time. It would've been nice to have condensed it and had it onto this one. So my thought is, I'd like to wait until the next CRA meeting.
They can't wait till June.
Right, in this case, I don't know if they can. I mean, we did, yeah, this is time management 101, but there are exceptions that are outside of that. But for folks that are looking for grants, I mean, it's right there on the cover page of the thing. It's, you know, this is a quarterly initiative.
And I have put those aside, yes, sir.
So this particular one, I mean, we did carve out time in commission meetings for that, for exceptions, which there seems to be a lot of here lately.
I told you, CRA is hopping. Just to give you an insight, I know that this hasn't happened in a long time, but in the past, Commissioner Mealy can attest to it. We had a CRA board meeting separate from the commission meeting every month.
Or twice a month, if not more, just to point out. But if it needs to be done, then it can be done. But let's just be conscious of that.
And I'd rather see us have 10-minute discussion about something than seeing nothing going on in this CRA like we did for 12 years. So, that's it. So we're good with it.
All right, so you're looking for consensus, right?
If you have any consensus, you'll give it? Okay, we have consensus, next commission meeting, we'll plug that in.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And if there's any other time pressing issues, let's try to get it all bundled together and.
I usually try to do that, but this one came up after the agenda was already posted, so I was like, "No, you're going to have to wait."
And when the application for this item is heard, it will still be in compliance with the rules?
Correct, because they have not actually put it on-site.
Okay. All right, what else you got for CRA?
That's it.
All right. Any other comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion a second, we are adjourned, and we will resume the regular meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so we are now at consent agenda, which is approve regular meeting minutes, April 27, 2023, a one-year insurance renewal proposal for the pier structure, and bid FB-23-0305 for the clubhouse interior rebuild.
I got questions on eight, so I'd like to pull eight.
Okay, so here, we're pulling eight. And what about six or seven? Is everybody okay with that, discussion on six or seven?
Liz explained seven to us when she was here last time, so.
Okay. We will open this up, public comment, for consent agenda items six or seven. CNN will close, we will, not close, we will close public comment.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, items six and seven.
All right, we have a motion a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed as unanimous. Item eight, who was first to pull that?
Rick called it first.
Commissioner Bellhumer?
I just, there's no cover sheet on this, so there's really no explanation of what's going on here. Is this something that'll be totally paid for with insurance?
Between insurance and FEMA, a majority of the fees should be paid. FEMA has been here this week and they are reviewing the dune walkover project and the clubhouse, all the claims we've made to ensure that we are replacing what was there and not adding additional things. Or if there are additions, it's for mitigation issues to improve it to be stronger for the next storm.
Okay, well, I had asked a question because there wasn't any intro into this explaining.
I'm sorry.
How that was going, how. Well, you were gone for weeks, so you're forgiven this, right?
I do have, I have the.
But we only had one bid.
Yes, sir, one bid. We had, we held a pre-bid meeting, and the contractor that bid did show up to that, so he visually was on-site to see everything and make his proposal.
So basically, it's going to look the same as it did before?
Just a little fresher, yes.
Stronger?
Yes, okay.
Is that all your questions, right?
Well, just, just so, I just was hoping that insurance would cover it. Between insurance and FEMA.
Between both of them, like I said, I mean, I don't have insurance numbers. I don't have exact FEMA numbers, so I can't answer that 100%, but that's the goal.
And we don't have any other bids to weigh the price against, so.
No.
All right, well, it's not crazy money, but that's my question, thank you.
Any other comments? I have a comment. I have a comment. I don't know what I'm approving. I can't find anything in here that says what work's being done. That's my only issue. I have a ton of insurance and drug-free workplace documents, but I have nothing outlining what is even, what we're even approving, unless I am missing it altogether.
No, that was my question too, but I think I need you to tell us.
Well, we're repairing stuff, is kind of what I'm getting out of it.
Just because I've been there and understand what still needs to get done, it's putting the sheet rock back in place and putting the walls back together. Things had got wet because the roof had leaked and there was a lot of water inside. So it's a typical flood property. Although it wasn't floodwater, it was rainwater that saturated a bunch of drywall in there and carpet and things of that sort. Anything, it was, you know, four inches, four inches deep. So that's, that's the only way I know what's going on down there. You're right, there's nothing in here to explain.
Again, I apologize. I was in here to put the bid, put the agenda packet together.
I can read this.
And this is the addendum that was put out that amended the scope. I will need those back.
Okay, so I'll pass this and then I'll read this one here so everybody can see. So what this is, just for the record, is remove and replace impact storefront glass door, including hardware and deadbolt. Removal or replacing of restroom doors. Installation of hand wash, kitchen sink with faucet. Installation of a sliding barn door, six-foot track in ladies bathroom. Level the concrete floor. Do drywall and baseboards, commercial carpet, wall tile in restrooms and kitchen area. Chair rail around the seating area. Two ADA compliant bathroom sinks. Permitting, electrical, plumbing, that's tied with this. You know, I'll pass this down. So this way, it's clear and, you know, for the public, what's actually being done. That's a good amount of work.
It is, and I was down there at the site for the pre-bid, and it is quite a bit of work. And the chair rail was an addition, and that was because they're not going to repaint the entire interior. So in case they can't match the paint up with the existing, because the drywall, it's like a flood out. So the drywall's cut off about two and a half, three feet up. About three feet up off the ground, so.
There are a couple of things here that weren't necessarily flood-related too, such as leveling the floor. And the sinks, I guess, are just bringing it up to date, ADA compliant.
Correct.
So those sort of little things may put it over what the insurance would pay for anyway.
I can't speak to the insurance. That's not my area of expertise.
Like I said, it's not crazy money.
And when we were down there for the pre-bid, Ms. Novak was with us, and she's the one who noticed the floor, the uneven floor.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if they just had extra padding on the carpet down before.
It's always been very uneven.
Yeah, so that was noted to repair that.
Well, hold on, you're saying that this could go over, but we're approving 53508.
You're approving the bid amount 53508.
So, Rick, what were you talking about, this could go over?
No, I'm saying, the insurance company ain't going to pay to level the floor. I'll tell you that now. They're not going to pay for sinks that weren't there to start with because we won't make it ADA compliant. So there may be, there may be a couple of things that'll run the cost of.
The sinks were there.
Right.
When we, because it's a commercial facility, if we're going in repairing it, we have to bring it up to code while we're doing it. So that's the change in the sinks, to the ADA sinks.
Okay. But this contract's not going to go over that amount. It's all itemized down in the contract, correct, Penny?
I'm sorry.
The 53508 is outlined in the contract.
Commissioner Bellhumer's comment was not so much, wasn't the contract price that Commissioner Bellhumer was talking about.
He's talking about the insurance reimbursement.
It might push back from insurance.
Right, this probably won't be a wash, is what you're saying, with the insurance?
Penny explained about the sinks, but I wouldn't think that the insurance would pay to level the floor. Liz is going to tell us.
I don't have the exact amount. We did already receive an insurance payment, money for the clubhouse. I don't have the exact figures with me, but we can also go back and relook. They're willing, if the amount exceeded what we've already received, they were willing to go back and look at it. I don't have the exact numbers with me right now. I can get them for you, though.
I'll say, "Let's just get it done."
Any other comments? All right, CNN, we will open this up, public comment. Any members of the public wish to speak on item eight on consent agenda? All right, CNN will close public comment, and.
Motion to approve the contract with Paul Culver Construction for $53,508 for the clubhouse.
Second.
We have a motion a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed as unanimous. All right, general business, item nine, discussion of approach to acquire countywide cooperation for tourism impact on Flagler Beach. City manager.
Commission, at a prior meeting, you had discussed the concept of doing a futuristic strategic planning meeting that would involve the tourist development council and possibly other governmental units. Based upon your discussion, I approached the Flagler County manager as well as Palm Coast and Vanel managers and presented them with the concept of the city of Flagler Beach writing a letter to the respective entities asking that they appoint a number of people from their governing body. And as we discussed, it was two, two to three, preferably two, in order to make it manageable. If they would be willing to recommend to their governing bodies that they would work with us to convene the legislative members to talk about the futuristic problems that confront Flagler County. I said specifically that Flagler Beach wanted to discuss the issue of quality of life as it would related to growth in the county and how that growth could potentially create negative impacts on Flagler Beach and the public services of Flagler Beach to manage those growth-related issues and tourism coming into the beach. I received a positive response by the county, county manager, as well as the city manager of Palm Coast and Vanel. So they encouraged me to present this to you and see if you would like to draft, have a letter drafted that would be signed by the mayor and sent to the respective governing bodies that would ask for a meeting to be convened. And then if they all answered in the affirmative, we would then appoint two people from the Flagler Beach City Commission. The county would point two people from the county commission, as well as Palm Coast and Vanel. We'd also invite Beverly Beach to attend. So that is the firm, I guess, the final results of that meeting that based upon what you requested me to pursue. So I would, at this point, if you continue to be interested, we have a receptive audience on all the governmental institutions in Flagler County. We could write a letter that would be from the commission and would go to those bodies asking that they appoint two people for a meeting that would discuss quality of life in Flagler County. And each one of the governing bodies would decide an agenda item that it wanted to have presented. And then as well as the agenda item that you discussed that you would like to have presented.
All right, commissioners?
I just, Drew, if we announce those meetings and somebody's there to take minutes, we're okay with sunshine?
Publicly noticed and somebody's taking minutes? Because that's right, if you have two from each board, then it's going to be subject to sunshine.
Yeah, all the way around.
Commissioner Strathair?
No, I had, I told my guests today.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I told my guests today that years ago, when Craig Coffey first started as the county administrator, we would have, maybe they were quarterly, I don't remember how often they were, but it was our whole commission, the whole county commission, the whole city of Palm Coast Council. And at first, they were good meetings, and we started, we produced stuff. Then after a while, they became, well, here's all the great stuff we did last month, and, you know, then there was really no purpose to them anymore. But in the beginning, they were good. So I think this is a great idea because it would be more focused on why are we there?
Commissioner Strathair?
I agree. I think it's a great idea, probably long overdue. And perhaps having a couple of representatives instead of the full boards would make it more manageable. I, for one, would be interested in participating, but. I, I for one would be interested in participating, but I think what was not spoken directly, but what was suggested is that this is in reply to something we spoke about last time, about getting some shared funding for use of the beach. And I don't think Mike said those words, but this is a great opportunity for that. And I think in, in my conversation with Mike Abel, the the thought was that this would be not a one-time meeting, but, you know, quarterly or whatever it would be, and to establish that kind of relationship. But I, I think that'd be a great idea. I mean, we're, we, we all know how much growth has happened, and we suspect what will happen, and we know that everybody who moves here wants to go to the beach at some point. So this is a good opportunity to lay our concerns out before the other bodies, our, our basically our governmental partners.
Even more so than funding, just bandwidth and carrying capacity. You know, adding 10, 15,000 people every single year and trying to funnel that through a city of 5,000 with all those folks pretty much moving here with the understanding that probably 90% are better or moving here for the beach. It just becomes a carrying capacity, and we need to be able to get county citizens to the beach. There has to be something, there has to be an alternate to the pinch point of just 100. You know, trying to funnel all of that through that tiny choke point. Regardless of any funding, but funding is definitely part of that. Commissioner Bellheimer?
Yeah, I, I guess, what would you call it, an intra-governmental workshop? Or that's, something like that?
Sounds like a good name to me.
Okay, or workshops. It sounds like something, like Commissioner Strathell said, it might not be just one meeting. So, um, yeah, actually, I was, I was supposed to meet with Mayor Alvin today, and I was gonna hit a couple of topics with him, but he, he was out sick, so I didn't get that opportunity, but I mean, yeah, absolutely, while we got their interest and they're willing to participate and, and, you know, it'll give us a chance to explain better our positions, they'll get a better chance to explain their positions and make each of us individually understand what the other cities or county are going through, so. Yeah, I think it'd be, it should be a very productive way of pursuing what we asked for, so. I think it's a super idea, and I myself would love to be a participant as well. That's it.
Mayor, if you want to go before me, I can go. Mayor?
I think it's a must-do. We are funneling this entire county into Flagler Beach, and we need countywide assistance. I had already spoken with David Alvin at the mayor's, meet the mayors at the Board of Realtors, and he was 100% in agreeance and was very open to meeting and discussing it.
Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, I was just gonna say too, I had, Mike and I had a good conversation about this same topic, and I think we're moving in a direction of showing the county, we're willing to help ourselves. We're gonna improve our parking lots. I think one of the other suggestions was, we're gonna get, you know, get them lit, so then people know where the parking and such is, and just showing that, you know, we're willing to help ourselves. Now we need your help to come to the table and help us fund some of these things if, until, you know, maybe strategically, things are planned out to, like you said, a different pinch point to beach access and things in the future. But show them that we're willing to help ourselves and do things. Now we're asking for your help. Whether that be adding lifeguards to other parts of the county, whatever it might be, but I think, I think those are great conversations, and I know we'll have great representation there from our, our dais, and looking forward to seeing where this, this all goes. And I think it's, you know, what was it on Fox 35, they, I don't know if anybody else saw it, about the t-shirt shops being all the shoplifting that's going on there. And I think that's also just part of growing pains is municipality and, or not, not our municipality, but the county. And kind of needing the reinforcements that, you know, we kind of had discussed in, I guess, our pre-budget meetings last week.
It's not just t-shirt shops. And there's a cultural shift, you know, there's a dynamic going on with shoplifting, especially with younger folks, with social media. Where it's becoming a badge of honor a lot of times on TikTok and stuff, and it's, it's kind of a shame. Any other comments? City manager? So we would need to have two representatives chosen. You want to get that accomplished tonight?
Well, first, they have to agree to do it.
We, we have to get a affirmative response back. I can then, hopefully, if it's as early as the next meeting, but I would guess probably the first meeting in June is I'll have responses back from everyone. If you all, if you choose to have me write this letter, which the mayor would then sign, and I would think probably the first meeting in June, we should have a response back. And then I would think you'd want to make your appointments at that point to just, based upon how many that is finally recognized by the letters that we receive, how many they want to have. I would suggest that I put in the letter that, that you sign, what your subject is, and if what I mentioned about quality of life based upon tourism impact on, or on growth, based upon tour, growth, impact on tourism in Flagler Beach. If that's an agreed-upon subject, I would suggest that I do put that in the letter.
Consensus on letter?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, we have a consensus, and then is everybody okay with choosing folks when the letter comes back?
When the time comes.
All right, and just since this is an item, we'll open this up public comment, even though we're not taking the action. Any members of the public wish to speak on this agenda? All right, CNN will close public comment. And we have all our questions answered. Right, city manager?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move on to item 10. Applications to appoint citizen representative and alternate citizen representative from Flagler Beach, serve on the River City TPO. Penny?
Yes, sir. So Mr. Ike has submitted his letter of resignation. And in that letter, he suggested that the current alternate, if he so wished, to be moved up to the primary. The alternate declined that request and added that might need to find an alternate as well. We did receive an application from a Johnny Spalmer, and we also received another application from Candace.
Candy.
And Ms. Candace's application indicates planning an architectural review board, but her description speaks to the, the TPO committee.
I know Candy, and this is the one she wants.
So I wasn't quite sure. I did, her name's on both tonight, so just...
And I did call her, she never called me back.
Okay.
But I, I know in, in previous discussions I had with her, this is the one she's interested in.
And since there were only two applicants for the TPO, I did not provide a scoring sheet. I was thinking that maybe you would, if you so choose, point one as your primary and one as your alternate.
If we do a primary and alternate, won't we need a scoring sheet, though? Or no? We can just do it by motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so thoughts on applicants? Do we have a primary or alternate suggestion?
Neither of them is here, so can't you sign?
I would I would propose the one that, that speaks of more appropriate reason for them making this application.
Which name are you referring to?
That would be Candace.
Okay.
And that, Ms. Palmer be the...
The alternate.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion, yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, thoughts or comments? All right, we'll open this up public comment. Members of the public wish to speak on this agenda. CNN will close public comment. Okay, so we have a motion for Candace's primary. And how do you say it, Johnny? As the alternate. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. All right, so congratulations, applicants.
Wherever you are.
All right. Item 11.
I provided to you a revised packet for item 11. You now have eight applicants, pardon me, for the three seats. Two of the applicants, Mr. Bennett and Mr. Garrett, are not able to attend tonight, and I apologize. I am not sure if the other applicants were reached out to to see if they were able to attend or not. So those were the two that I spoke with directly. I see one of them is here.
All right, we'll just go down the list in order.
Two of them, I'm sorry. Two, two of them are here.
Three?
Two. Cunningham and Smith.
Four of the seats?
Paul, I see Paul and Bob.
Oh, my God, sorry, Paul.
That's three.
Sorry, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know the faces of the other names, except Joseph, I know, and I see he's not here.
You can go down in order. So is Tim Bennett here?
No, he's, Mr. Bennett and Mr. Garrett were not able to attend. I know that.
All right. Paul Chestnut, come on up. If you can, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be on the par board.
I got a cheater. Paul Chestnut, 1115 North Central. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor Johnston. First, I'd like to say thank you to you and your former Commissioners for electing me for two terms, six years on the par board. It's been an honor to serve my city and that board. Thank you as well to Mr. Torino and my fellow par board members. Not every decision is easy or popular, but I have done my best to make rational, logical, and fair decisions. I am here tonight seeking a third term. As you all know, I'm a local business owner for seven years now, and employ almost 140 people. I'm a co-founder of Flagler Strong and Vice President of Hurricane Preparedness and Recovery, and hoping that I don't see you guys later on this year.
We don't want to see you.
We're facing a lot of new challenges and projects here. I love my city, and I know I would give you all I have to help maintain our quality of life and protect our way of life with smart, responsible growth, and again, quality of life moving forward. So thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
All right, questions for Paul? I'm getting off easy.
Yeah, nice.
All right, and Candace, was that the one that also, yeah, she's not here. And Scott. Scott Crone. Okay, and everybody has all their paperwork, okay. Bob Cunningham. If you can, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on par board.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Bob Cunningham. I've been in, I've been a resident of Flagler Beach for roughly about nine years now. My background is heavy in technology, building, designing, implementing local metropolitan wide-area networks, machine learning platforms, all, all over the world. I've also done a lot of work within landscape design and implementations. I want to be able to give back to the city. I look at regulations, I look at rules, and I try to apply all those fairly across the board. That's all.
All right, questions for Bob? You're getting off easy, too.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Bob.
We're saving all our questions for Lisa.
That's it. All right, Alex Garrett. Not present, okay, and Joseph, presumably I don't see him. All right, Lisa, come on up. We have all the questions for you. If you can, tell us a little bit about why you want to be on par board.
All right, Lisa Smith, 1640 Lambert Avenue. I've been a Flagler County land owner since 1998. Starting my 23rd year in residency in Flagler Beach. Raised my children here. My grandchildren are now gonna grow up here, which is great. My husband and I both own local businesses here. We've both been in real estate and construction for over 30 years. I also own property in the CRA, Commercial Downtown District. So Flagler Beach is my, my town. I live here, I work here, I play here. I have not previously volunteered on a commission, Flagler Beach Commission Committee. But I have been a Flagler Schools volunteer as a classroom volunteer, as well as for future problem solving, an evaluator for Florida Future Problem Solving. I currently serve as the treasurer for the Flagler County Association of Realtors. This is my third term to do that, and my final term. And I also currently serve as the president of the Flagler Housing Partnership, which if you're not familiar with that, it is a 501(c)(3) that was formed three years ago at the beginning of COVID, unfortunately, by the Board of Realtors, but it now stands alone. And we promote fair housing, low-income housing, and we're currently working on HUD certification to become a housing counselor for Flagler County instead of us sending our funds to St. John's or Volusia. So I just want to give back to my community and hope that I have something to offer.
All right, now all the questions. Questions for Lisa. All right, we'll be fair. All right, so Commissioners, everybody has their card. If you all could fill out the numbers on the front and then pass them down to Penny. And applicants appreciate the interest, and there's eight people for three seats, and these seats change often, so if not this time, please stay engaged, because there's, there's always a need for that. And Penny, you'll get those tabulated. We'll cover it here later on in the meeting. All right, so we will move on to item 12, discussion of offered laid-down yard lease.
Just pass it down, Scott.
Seeking direction from the commission on this. I think tail end of last year, former Commissioner Brian was conversing with Howard Sklar over at the Marina property, you know, with all the projects coming, I think Ken's, I know Ken's thinking was with the, the beach project, the pier project, the hotel project, both public and private projects, so there was, there is, and there will be a need for a lay-down yard, so they had those conversations. Some of them, I think, either tail end of the year, early this year, started working a little bit with Mr. Sklar's attorney, Jay Livingston, on the draft we have in front of you. There've been a few back and forths. I think the deal is about as good as the deal gets for the city, and there's one. I, I don't have strong feelings on it one way or the other, but I do have a risk to tell you about in it. And that is, if you look, the rent is $5,000 a month escalating every year. So $60,000 a year plus per year, but it's a three-year lease, and it's a hard three years. And this is, I'm telling you this part of it because I pushed on it, and there is no give, at least at this point. Can we get termination for convenience, and can we get flexibility on start date? And once a hard three years with a hard start and a hard stop. That means you're paying $5,000 a month whether or not you're using it as a lay-down yard, and I think that's a, that's a big risk. So, I mean, the concept is, is a good one. There is going to need, going to be a need for a lay-down yard. But I, I'm, I'd be hard-pressed to tell you it's a good idea to pay for one when you don't know when you're gonna be using it.
Commissioner Mealy?
Yes, there will be need for a lay-down yard. No, the city should not be paying for it. The residents of the city are gonna have their lives messed up quite a bit by all the projects that are going on. They shouldn't have to pay for the lay-down yard. I think that the hotel and contracted for the pier, and whoever else may need it, should work it out with Mr. Sklar, not us.
Other comments?
My thoughts are very similar to Jane's. I don't know why we would be muddling in with a private business and their, what they need when it's their construction manager's job to handle that area. We don't, when a homeowner wants to build, we don't get involved, and it should be the same way with a business.
Commissioner Sherman?
I'm in the same wavelength as the mayor and Commissioner Mealy. I just don't think this is good business for the city. I don't, I don't personally have the appetite for more, maybe, things that could get caught up in court. What we're dealing with now with the golf course, and I mean, you know, this could, I just could see... just could see this going down a path of some issues, and I think it is the responsibility of the contractor, not the city, to find a place if they need to have a laid-down yard. I think this is purely speculation, when I was reading through this, and I think also kind of to piggyback on what Commissioner Mealy said, it's just not, I don't think it's a good quality of life for our residents that live in that area that may have to deal with all of that equipment coming and going near their properties, and also I think the wear and tear on our, our roads over there. I mean, it's just, I just don't think it's strategically a good place to even consider a laid-down yard for where the scope of the work's going to be taking place as well.
Mr. Sprebely?
I, I concur with what's been said. I mean, the idea of having a space to put relief, which would result in relief on one of the city's parking dilemmas, sounds good if that were in isolation. But the first thing that comes to mind is premises liability. You know, you're talking about a property that's on the water, and, you know, for a three-year term, and to think that there may be three years without a personal injury claim would be wildly imaginative. So, that alone, I think, would create an issue.
You sound like an attorney.
Drew filled me in. So, so there are some pluses, but it sounds like the minuses heavily outweigh them. Thank you.
My thoughts are, I don't even know where this came from, we never even had a consensus to even pursue such an initiative.
By Mr. Sklar.
This was something that was brought to us?
Mm-hmm, it was brought to Ken.
Yeah, this got, it just, it seemed odd, it got this far without even, you know, getting any Commissioners' thoughts on any of this. You know, we just came to a consensus to draft a letter, and, but we have a whole lease agreement that none of us even asked for, that I know of, or at least not on public record. Totally against it, it's not going to save us any money. The contractors for the pier have already got that all bidded out, there's not going to be a discount for a lay yard in there, I promise you that. And I don't know why on earth we would get into private matters concerning any other building and have city-style lay yards on, and putting it on the, the island in a flood-prone area, throughout, I mean, there's a, there's 100 reasons why that's not a good idea, and why it's not even something that we should even be pursuing. And City Manager, did you have any thoughts on this?
Chair and Commission, it would be my recommendation that the city government should never become involved in speculating in private affairs with public funds. It's just, our funds are scarce, and we can't risk them to speculation.
Any other comments? This is just the discussion, well, we'll open this up public comment. Any Members of the public who speak on this? If you can, please state your name and address.
Nicholas Kimball, 200 Lambert Avenue, Flagler Beach, Florida. Hey, guys, so, this was brought to my attention by a couple of City Commissioners regarding the laid-down yard. Forward-thinking isn't cheap. When you look at the amount of construction that's going on in certain areas, if you have designated zones for construction to occur, and for pieces of property to sit, you can kind of control the flow, right? So, I own 27,500 square feet, Office Central. It's brought to me by several Commissioners that I should come to this meeting, I don't show very often in these. Doesn't create any impedance, it's got three ma, major ways of ingress egress, allows you to control the flow of traffic. Speculation, based on what I read with that lease, is Howard's deal is he wants you guys to basically, a commitment for three years, hard-fast lease. I'm not as stiff as that, you know, 180 days is perfectly okay with us, and also not as cheap as he is. Also, it'll give you transferable rights. So, if you guys had a set date where you wanted to use the real estate, and that was the date to begin, that's the terms when you, when your lease would begin. You would reduce a lot of the traffic, you're going to have a ton of traffic that's going there. You can give a designated zone, that's what you should do. Keep traffic from going over, across 100, down to Lantana, and down over there. Like you mentioned, it is in a water, an area where there is, as far as the liability goes, on the insurance side, additional insured, $5 million in coverage would probably cover it. From a speculation standpoint, there is no speculation if the lease doesn't begin until you guys agree on that as a designated zone. A little easier to work with than, than him, but also like, you know, at the same time, I realize that there's a benefit to having a place, the, the space in that, that area. So, if it's something you guys would like to consider, I could have something drafted up and a proposal put in front of your desk in the next 30 days. Any questions? It's cool.
Ms. Mealy?
My initial comment was that I didn't think this city should be doing this at all.
Right.
And I think I had support from other Commissioners. So, whether it's Howard, or it's you, or it's.
It's, it's not about the, for me, it's, for, I think for the community, it's not about like whether or not you're, you're co-managing funds, what you're doing is you're basically controlling where this traffic is going to happen.
I wouldn't mind if it was on your property.
Right, no, no.
I wouldn't mind if it was on Howard's property.
Right.
The city residents should not be paying for it, is my point.
Right.
So, if you want to negotiate with Minaj, go for it.
Oh, that's fine. I think what, the proposal that Howard had proposed was like, here is a piece of real estate, you guys are going to need a laid-down yard, here's what I'm offering, you guys get the transfer rights, so if you dictate that the work needs being done there, his lease was a little harder because he's like, hey, if you say yes, this is when it begins. Mine is, if you want to have leverage, then you have, you have leverage with me. That's what I'm thinking.
Do you have a question for Nick? Or just a comment?
No, just a comment, I mean.
Sure.
It's, it's, it does sound like a great idea, but I think it's just the wrong, from my opinion, just the wrong parties, you know, you and the hotel owner.
Absolutely.
It just seems, it seems that the city would benefit by being the middleman, basically, being a tenant and sub-tenanting it out. But the idea sounds good, I just think that if you were able to establish a relationship with the hotel owner, that'd be awesome.
Sure.
Which is what I just said.
Okay, any other questions for Nick? Okay, and thank you, Nick.
Thanks.
Any other Members of the public wish to speak on this agenda item? Alright, we'll close public comment. So, City Manager, there, we have another land use option available for potential future use brought forward, so it's, that's good to, you know, be aware of.
But that's not a direction to do anything.
Oh, that's just.
To be aware of.
Right. Alright, so we'll move on to number 13.
So, before you move on, I'm looking for directions so that I can go back to Mr. Sklar's attorney, and I begathered, the direction is.
No.
Well, I, I thank you for the offer, but no, thank you, and you're more than welcome to work with the private parties that are, that are going to need a laid-down yard. I think that's the way to communicate.
Do you have a consensus on that?
Yes.
That was a very nice way to put it.
He's a good guy, and I like working with him.
Alright, number 13, application, SP 23-04-01. We have Larry. Good to see you, Larry.
This item, I don't see the applicants here.
All kinds of questions.
That, I don't, I'm not sure you're going to have all the answers to.
Well, that would be your call, Larry, this is your item.
I believe the applicant should be present.
I agree on this one, because I think the, I think there are going to be questions that are going to need a response from the applicant, rather than do some of it without the applicant here, and then, you know, table it until the applicant can be here, and they miss out on a whole big part of the conversation, so I think, I agree with Larry.
Agreed.
And secondly, on our, on the city's behalf, when David King was not available, he's out of town, and I know a lot of the questions are going to be technically related, engineering-type related questions, stormwater, et cetera. I can answer to a certain point, but I don't want to be held liable for information.
Having attended the Par Board meeting, I would say that it would be necessary for the, you wouldn't be there too. It would be necessary.
I'm fine with that.
Alright, so we, do we have a consensus to?
Motion to table, please, and we're not doing date certainties anymore, so don't worry about it, but still, motion to table.
Alright, so we will need a motion to table.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Your motion is second, we'll open this up public comment, any Members of the public wish to speak on this agenda item? Alright, seeing none.
And everybody keep this stuff so Penny doesn't have to.
Yeah, this is quite a bit. This is quite a bit. Alright, so, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Penny, I scribbled online, can I promise I will keep it? Yes. Yeah.
Thanks, Larry, good job.
That was a tough one, Larry.
Have a good night, Larry.
Alright, we'll move on to item 14, City Attorney.
I can't think of anything that I have, does anybody have any questions for me?
Yeah.
Questions for?
I do.
I do.
I think I'm supposed to know the answer to this. Pine Tree Street, the Code Enforcement, there's a meeting next week, the magistrate?
It's two weeks.
With the 24th or something?
Yes, and I saw an email today, I don't know if, I know John has been out there a couple of times for inspections, and when I talked to him last week, he had some concerns about the conditions out there as to whether or not there was a case for nuisance, and so he was, you know, I think already met with, what's her name, Sandra?
Sandra Nituvik.
Nituvik, Ms. Nituvik, yes, ma'am. He'd spoken, I think, I think it was Ms. Nituvik he'd spoken with, and he was working on setting up another meeting with her, because I'd asked him, I know she feels very strongly about it, and he wasn't seeing a condition rising to the level that it had been described to us, so I asked him to follow up with her and set up another meeting where she could point, point to him. So, and I don't, I don't think that has occurred yet, based on the fact that we got an email from her today, I'm guessing that that meeting has not occurred.
I would guess.
But I know that's what he is working on, is working on doing another site visit with her, with him, so that he can see what she's seeing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for, did you have a question for Drew?
I do. Drew, I wanted to ask you about this Form 1 versus Form 6. What the big, what the differences are.
It's a more detailed, it's a more detailed financial disclosure. Form 1 was very easy, Form 6 is much more detailed, much more.
Have fun with your problems.
Into your, yes, exactly.
Start now.
Well, when, when does it, when does it go into effect?
January.
Yeah, this coming year.
Okay, so.
So, next.
Not the year. So, we've already done a Form 1 this year?
Right, you've done your disclosure, they've done their disclosures where, you know, we've done disclosure, we've all done this, we've done Form 1 this year, so your disclosure next year will be the Form 6, correct?
Okay.
Thank you.
How's it?
Yeah, I spoke to the Fire Pension Board Attorney about that yesterday. If we do a Form 1, because that's his big thing, every time we have a meeting, he says, make sure you get your Form 1 in. But next year, if we do a Form 6, we won't have to do a Form 1 for the Fire Pension, or the Police Pension.
Because you will have already, because your Form 6 disclosure will have included everything the Form 1 asked for, correct? Yes.
Any other questions for Drew?
No.
Thank you. City Manager?
At our last meeting, the Commission instructed me to bring back to the Commission a plan, short-term plan for stormwater improvements. I want to bring the Commission up to date on where we're at, and I will be bringing to you that plan at the, at our next meeting, which will be the second meeting in May. But I want to just tell you right now what we're doing, so you have somewhat of an idea. What we have done at this stage is, the equipment we have in Public Works, which is the equipment that we use in order to vacuum out the storm basins, is really, it's broken down and it's substandard. It's not really adequate for what we need to do a major cleaning project in our storm basins. We have an opportunity to rent a truck, it's a major, large truck, for $10,000 a month, and it would be a purchase price of about $350,000 total. 50% of the lease price for the truck would be credited back against any purchase that we wanted to do. Now, there is a caveat in that, but I'll, we'll bring the caveat to you at a later point, when we know exactly if it, how firm it's going to be. But, so we do have the availability of purchasing the truck. We have done a test on the truck, and it works very, very well. Public Works can use it, we can lease it effective the 22nd of this month. So, I have, based upon the Commission's direction, which you, you instructed last meeting, to go into reserves if we need reserves to start short-term projects. So, I, we, I've instructed Public Works to go ahead and lease that truck. It will be in on the 22nd, we'll do an initial 30-day lease, possible 60 to 90-day lease, determined about how long it takes us to clean the storm drainage. I will bring back to you at the next meeting, the streets that we'll be doing, and the parameters of those streets, that we will be doing a short-term, short-term project on. We're also looking long-term at doing retention basins, and, and doing the cleaning of those retention basins, but that would have to be built into next year's budget. We're looking at this point that there would be two storm drainage basins that we'd be bringing in to next year's budget. I will also bring those to you next meeting, so that you'll see what we're planning at least, and any discussion can be arranged, can be had on what those basins are at your next meeting. So, I'll be bringing you the streets, the parameters of the streets, next meeting, as well as the retention basins. We will already, hopefully, we'll, training will take place on the 22nd, 23rd, so by the, the next meeting, the, the actual work will have started, and I'll be showing you the streets that we'll be doing, so that you can have any input that you feel wise on what those streets are. So, that, that, your direction has been initiated. I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions or comments?
Glad to see we're doing it.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good idea to use it a little bit first and see. My concern with it is having the labor force to utilize it to, to the degree that it can be used, because that's a very expensive piece of equipment, it's what's almost $400,000, right?
Yes.
An approach.
Yeah, it's under $400, $300.
Just, just for clarity, you said it was 350, it's, it's 380, is what they quoted last meeting, right?
Okay, three.
Just for clarity.
So, that, that would be my concern. Benny says he'll probably use it more than, than Public Works will. So, that's, and then when they, they have their water breaks and things of that sort, they use that, the one they have now that's broke down quite often, of course, they haven't used it lately because it's broken, but, so it needs something in the meantime, and if 50% of the lease goes towards purchase price, that's, that's a fair deal. So, I'd, I'd like the idea that we're going to use it first and, and see if it really will meet our needs. So, that's my thoughts. But are you, are you talking anymore on stormwater, or we just talk about the truck right now? We'll stick with it.
Well, this was, you know, this was.
I'll get back to it.
Commissioner Sprebely?
I want to say, good job on that, Mike, and you know, that kind of solution is what we need, and, you know, for the residents, including the ladies who were here a while ago, who are always here on these kinds of issues, I think it's great to see actual progress. You know, we talk a lot, but it's great to see that progress, so I appreciate it.
Any other comments? Drew? I think it's great to see too, and we're, we're hearing it, and we're acting on it, and kudos to you for, you know, using that opportunity to get some storm drains cleaned out. So overdue.
Put this truck in the parade, people will be very happy to see it.
Yeah, I mean, if we got it under lease, let's see if we can break it. Let's, let's use it, let's get our money's worth.
It's got wheels, it'll be in the parade.
Alright, did you have anything else outside of the truck?
Just one thing, we have been working with Florida Power to change out, have decorative lights in Veterans Park. If you notice, in the middle of the park, there's some Florida Power lights that are there. With there, we don't have a timeframe yet when they're going to do it, but it'll be fairly shortly. I would like to take the light down that's just to the north of City Hall, it's a shining, the light shines all the time. I've had the, the police chief look at it from a safety perspective, because the only thing I can think that it. thing I can think that it does is provide some light for people coming in and out of City Hall. But we also have decorative lights that do the same thing. They provide light, we have three of them outside City Hall, really, on the nor, on the east and west side. So I wanted to let the commission know that unless I hear objection tonight, I will instruct our facilities to take that light down. It's shining all the time, it's wasting energy, and I, I think it's an eyesore, so it detracts from what I think the commission has wanted to do, and that's the visual aesthetics of Veterans Park. So I wanted to, to let you know my thoughts, and what I, what I was planning on doing.
All right, do we have a consensus?
I'm good.
Yes.
Is that the one you're talking about, right here?
Pretty close to it, either there or there.
There, on the inside corner in the trees.
Right, right across from the door.
Right.
Yeah, the, the light is on twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah. Right across from the door.
Any other thoughts? We have a consensus.
Yep.
Yes.
All right. What else you got?
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, applicants for PAR Board, I have the scoring sheet. I'll announce this in alphabetical order by last name. Paul Chestnut, Joseph Pazuli, and Lisa Smith are the new PAR Board members. So congratulations, and to your highest paying gig you've ever done.
Penny?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Garrett mentioned that he had been on the Daytona Beach Fire Union Board, that was what he wrote as his qualifications.
Yes, ma'am.
The Fire Pension Board is going to need a, well, two city appointments.
Correct, that's going to be on your May twenty-fifth agenda for police and fire pension, and I understand Robbie's not interested in being reappointed.
Robbie's not doing it. So I was thinking maybe Mr. Garrett might be.
Are you thrilled about doing it?
No, I, we told him he couldn't quit, but he didn't listen to us. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
I'll reach out to him and see if he's interested. Are those meetings still quarterly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It was just a thought, you know, when I saw the fire thing, I thought maybe he might be interested. So thank you.
All right. We'll move on to commission comments.
Nothing from Penny?
Oh, Penny. We need to add your name on here.
That's okay. I just, again, to publicly thank Janelle for filling in with, for me while I was out. I don't worry at all when I'm gone with her here, so that's excellent.
She does a good job.
Yeah. Jinx.
You trained her well.
All right, mayor.
I only have a few things. One, the tax collector reached out to me to let me know that tomorrow, at the Flagler Beach office, they will be giving away bike helmets, so if you know anyone that needs bike helmets, they fit them, you're fitted properly, and you can pick one up there.
You talk to her from time to time.
Every quarterly. Quarterly meeting. Like to give a thank you to previous mayor Linda and Chair Cooley for the beach cleanup this Saturday. It was a very windy turnout. But we still had people there. I attended the mayor's meeting on Wednesday, last Wednesday, Strategic Planning Day. And Palm Coast and Banelle stressed the amount of growth and development that was going to be happening. And.
It's scary.
It's very scary. Definitely Palm Coast, they're looking at doubling, so we've got to.
Just that one on the west side of Route One that's going to be sixty-five.
Hold on to your bootstraps.
Those residents all need beach access. They gotta be able to get to the beach.
Yes.
You know what we need is a flyover from Route One over the whole county.
Well, speaking of flyover, I flew over that area, and they got a lot of it cleared already.
Bye.
And then I just had one question. I know it's from Mike, Katie was working on the grant for the sand fencing. Has she received any approval if, where we're at on that? I know it was a grant, we weren't getting approved for the grant, but to see if we were qualifying for the grant. Has it, has that happened yet, or is it going to be later in the month?
It's later in the month.
Okay.
We haven't received it yet.
I'm just going to ask, so it doesn't get forgotten out.
Sure, yeah, we're, matter of fact, we evaluated that today, and we're still working with DOT to ensure that we have the material, the fencing, in, in their budget, which is part of the overall project, so it, we're staying on top of it.
Perfect. All right, that's it, that was all I had.
Mr. Sherman.
All I have really is just the, I want to tell Penny and Lee, thanks again for communicating with the residents down there in the twenty-seven-hundred block of South Daytona, South, I think, South Daytona area over there. I did have a question, Mike, or I don't know if anybody on the dais can answer it, but there is one picture that I think that, I think everybody's been seeing those emails circulating. The only question I have is about that, there's one picture that kind of, I think the residents are maybe having the heartburn over, is the, it says, fill line here. And it's at the top, I don't know if you guys saw it, but it's like at the top of the bricks, where the stem wall is. And I know Lee and everybody's been stressing to them, that all that fill dirt is going to go into the stem wall, not around the property, but I guess that's the only picture I really had a concern with. It's written on one of the bricks, it looks like it might be on the south, south end of the, yes, due south end of the property there. And there's something like written almost in like a chalk or like a pinkish color, and so I wasn't sure if they're saying fill line here for the concrete where the block is, or is it the fill line for the inside of the stem wall, or is it truly what I don't, I truly don't believe is, fill dirt to then fill, to build the property, because I know we've reiterated, and we're not doing that, so.
I might be able to shed some light on that. They have, it's a top row block.
Yeah.
It's called chair block.
Okay.
So that's an eight-inch block, but it's, it's got a L chopped out of it. So the dirt gets only filled halfway up that last row of block. So then the last four inches gets concrete. So they don't, the, it's probably on there so that they don't fill it all the way to the top, because then they're going to have to take four inches off, so they have room for the concrete. So the concrete, when it's poured, is flush with the top of the block wall. So that, that line should be even with the inside of what they call is the chair block.
And I think everybody's also worried.
I had another thought on that though. So. There, there seems to be a communication gap with assumptions versus what's actually happening. And, you know, honestly, why are we worried about what's written on a wall? Right? Because if they, if they do something and they're in violation, then we go fix that violation. But they haven't done anything wrong, they're in the middle of working. And if they write something random on the wall that might be perceived as something, that's, that's this whole thing, is, is folks are making assumptions, including us, on what it means, but no one knows what it means because nobody's talked to them. And, and that's, that's really one of the biggest heartburn points out of the, the entire situation. And that's why I've kind of stayed out of it, because they're just working, and there's no current violations that are there that exist now, I believe. And I think that's a fact, is, if I'm wrong, correct me. And, and so that's all I'm worried about. If they have some random thing written on the wall that says, you know, one hundred feet, that doesn't necessarily mean they're going put in fill in no hundred feet. It's, it's just, I, so I just had to say it, because I think that's what's happening, and, and there's this big communication gap where we're seeing something that we don't quite understand, but we're not asking the questions to understand it. That's, that's all.
But we receive those same questions over and over and over again. And Lee has answered them today, Penny answered them, and they're all saying the same thing. The builder knows what he's supposed to be doing, he cannot fill the land higher than it was before. He has to put in this thing in the back, the retention area in the back, and the dirt has to be put somewhere that he's going to put inside the stem wall, or is currently putting inside the stem wall. And I don't care, they, they keep asking the same questions over and over and over again, and they're going to get the same answers, because they're the right answers.
That's it.
That's it.
And the, the work is in progress, and there's no current violations. And, and we can assume there might be some later on, but we, we're not at that moving yet.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up, because I know it's been, you know, and I'm sure everybody else's email boxes have been being notified of this, so I just wanted to discuss it up here as a, as a group.
And Penny, thank you for what you wrote today. Saved the rest of us from having to write the same thing.
Right. Exactly. And then I, I guess they also were requesting maybe a meeting with, but I, I think, again, somebody had addressed, there was the, there was already that meeting.
Right. We're having.
Well, I think one of the things.
We're having a meeting.
One of the things they were asking about was about the permits also, about one of the homes getting fill in their backyard or something along those lines.
Landscape.
Landscape fill, yeah.
They want a meeting over somebody's landscape?
Basically, they want to get a, yeah, to get that.
Landscape variance, so they can add fill dirt as well.
Nick, you can't do that.
I suggest, I wrote them back and suggested that they could come and speak under public comment, if they have a question.
That's all I have.
You'll learn.
They could go to the building department and find out what the process is of putting fill dirt in their yard, and they'll explain it to them. So, all right, I've got a few things here, go as quick as I can. We got our yearly paving done, although it wasn't yearly last year, because we didn't do any. But it's done, and just wanted to know, we got, we have plans in the works of striping, putting the stop bars down in the proper places.
The answer is yes, but I don't have, you know, specific dates or times when they're going to go in. Would you like that? Would you like dates?
No, I don't necessarily need dates, I'm just curious whether we're going to just do the ones that just got paved, or we're going, we need to get that done citywide again, so it might be better worked out if we did it all at once. You know, with the mobilization fees and stuff like that, so.
How much we have in the budget, I don't know, I'd have, that, that answer I'd have to get to you, I, I don't have it.
Yeah, I didn't expect you had that, it was right in front of you, but I just wanted to mention it. It, our buried seawalls buried again, all the way from Eighteenth out, so that's, that's nice. Went for my helicopter ride with the mosquito control people. Very informative. Learned a lot about what they're looking for when they're up there, and learned a lot about the topography that you don't see driving around in the truck. Went a nice, nice route down over to Beulah Creek, and down along John Anderson's, the south end, and across High Bridge, and worked our way up. But it was really, what they're really looking for when they're up there is areas of water that don't have any tidal movement. So in, in other words, little lakes or puddles that, that don't have water replacing.
Can I add something to that? Real quick, can I add something? We also learned on that tour that a lot of the stuff they spray is not just chemicals, it's all, it's coconut oil, which I thought was very cool.
But depends whether it's larvae, or whether it's, whether they're adult mosquitoes.
So the mosquitoes don't get sunburned?
It was, it was really informative, and it was, it was, you learned more about what's going on too, like up near Princess Place somewhere, there's this big pile of sand that's apparently that they've stockpiled to, to put out on the beach. So I didn't realize that we had a stockpile, or the county, had a stockpile that they were working with, but that was something like you wouldn't have seen from the street. So if you haven't signed up for your mosquito control helicopter ride, you ought to check it out.
What does the coconut oil do?
That, I believe, stops the larvae from swimming. I wrote it down, that was really fascinating.
Not sunburned.
Well, they had, they had a neat system where they, where they could actually fly drones out and, and spread material, but then they got struck down by federal guidelines.
Yeah, privacy.
And so it's parked right now. So there's, getting one that's, meets the standards, so they can get it back up in the air. Farmers Market is now using the second pavilion, not just the first pavilion.
Oh, she got so mad that we criticized her about the first one, she's now using the second one?
Well, somebody was in the second one on Saturday. So, I don't know, it's something we spoke about before, but it's still ongoing. So what do we do about? We, we reached a consensus that we wanted to, that them to stay within the confines of the, what the commission agreed, the space they could use.
There's an actual map for the.
Yeah, there is, which does not include the, the pavilions.
Yeah, we kept the pavilions because it's a public asset, and they're available for rent and public use, and, but there, there's an actual, and you all know this, but for city manager, there's, there's a map that has the layout, that was approved when this was all back in the beginning agreed on. And they've done a pretty good job following it, up until as of late. But.
Okay.
Unless there's a discussion about changing the map.
No.
Okay, I'm just going to.
Before you move on, Mr., the chair makes a, makes a point that I didn't think of last thing I were talking about, that's, those, those pavilions are for rent, right?
Correct.
Do we want, do we want to communicate to them, if you want to use the pavilion, you need to rent them like everybody else, instead of saying, stay off the pavilions, say, if you want to use them, fine, but you got to pay for them.
They have every right to rent them, the same that Public does, but the double edge to that sword is, we wouldn't, I don't think we would want, you know, correct me, I don't want to speak for you, but we wouldn't want them reserving it all the time.
Right in advance, right, that's why, that's why it's a question, I, it might not be, it might not be how you want to couch that, but it just occurred to me that maybe that's how we couch them, is, look, these are there for years, you can rent them the same way as anybody else can, the same process, but you got to pay for it, it's not part of the agreement you have with us.
Any?
There's not, for per se, a rental fee for those pavilions. That's right. They can be reserved as a part of a special event, and we would charge for electric, if they're using the electric or.
Bouncy walls.
Reuse, garbage removal, if they're having like food out there, things like that, but there's not a fee for each of them.
So there's no rental fee, so then the message does need to be, this is not part of the agreement, you worked with the city, if you want to change the agreement, you need to come before the commission and ask to change the agreement. Yes, commission?
Do we have a consensus on it?
Whatever makes it work.
Yes.
Yes.
I would say yes. So we have a consensus on that.
Okay, got a call from Heger today, or lobbyist.
Which ear is bigger than the other one?
Naturally, it was relatively quick conversation, but he did mention that the chatter that he's hearing amongst his peers and people in Tallahassee is that their, the new search form has a broader reach than the last search. So he's saying more people are getting the word.
City managers, sir, I wasn't.
Yeah, city manager search, yes.
That's good, good thing.
So I don't know if any of the others of you got a call from Heger, but that was some of his news. Of course, they're waiting until close to the end of the month for the governor's signature.
Nope, didn't get anything.
So the South Flagler Water, Stormwater Upgrade. So, the South Flagler Water, Stormwater Upgrade, hasn't really turned out to be an upgrade. So, I know we talked a little bit the other day about trying to make this an actual improvement in the end, although it hasn't been to this point. And that would be hopefully to get the water out of the ditches and into the drains. So, if they can work with that elevation and save the people on that, those several blocks there, the aggravation of having water in their ditch six months out of the year. So, then it could actually, we could actually claim that we accomplished something. At this point, I don't believe we can. So, you say you were going to follow up on that, but just wanted to bring that up again. And I, the most common question I get is about walkovers, so can you bring us up to speed on what the latest is, on why we don't see any activity, walkovers?
I'm assuming that they are still waiting on drawings. I don't, I know that the three were permitted. That was the South Second ADA Ramp, the South Twenty First and South Twenty Eighth Street are the three that have been permitted. And I can follow up with them tomorrow. I don't, I've been playing catch up, you know.
Yeah.
Take a vacation, you get punished when you come back.
Yes, absolutely.
So.
So, would that be something you could bring under the city clerk comments for next meeting?
Yes, sir, and I'll also email you all when I find that out, but yes, you can bring that up to.
Yeah.
I'll have an up-to-date report for the public if that's what you'd like.
That'd be good.
That sounds good.
Yeah, because that's, that's the question we get asked most.
Honestly, I forgot to even give Katie my weekly update, so I'll hopefully, if she hasn't got it ready to go, I can get her something in the morning to add for that, for the public to be posted.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you, Penny. That's all I got.
Mr. Mealy?
I'd like to go last if I could.
Mr. Sprouly?
Ooh, thank you. You know that the Dune, the last Dune holdout, signed a settlement agreement with the, with Flagler County about a month ago, which was good. That's still under the rules governing the matters like this in the bankruptcy court where all of this was happening. It required that there be a motion to approve it with all creditors having an opportunity to weigh in and object to it or not. And the time to object ran and the order approving the, and it ran and no one objected. And so, the order approving it is on the judge's desk and I expect it to be signed by tomorrow.
I kept waiting for a but.
And but, no, it'll be signed by tomorrow in all likelihood. And so, that'll be, bring a formal conclusion and the order says that the, that the county can then record the settlement documents, including the easements into the public record. So, that's the significance of that, it's the formality that we needed. So, that's good news. The Johnston Fences continue to be constructed up and down the beach. I had, I live down South Twenty Third and the DOT version stopped just north of South Twenty Third and then picked up the other side, for some reason, of the walkover, but that's now being filled in. And I still, I tend to get pretty uniform positive comments from property owners down that way, most of whom come from the same places, I suppose, we all do, which is tired seeing people go down onto the beach, you know, with our newly bare dunes. So, they seem to be happy with that. May 1st, there were two flood outreach meetings here presented by Quality Engineering and Surveying, talking about elevating houses on the one hand, or if they didn't meet a certain value objective, then there would be funding to demolish them and some money to help you begin rebuilding. Both of those outreach meetings were well-attended. Commissioner Mealy and I and Commissioner Bill Hummer was also there. They were to standing room only capacity and a lot of good information came down. In fact, the engineering firm, I thought, were, they were fabulous communicators.
They were outstanding.
You know, they knew what they were doing, they, there were some tough questions, but these guys knew what they were doing and I thought gave really solid answers, lots of information. They handed out information.
Yeah, this is.
They, they have all kinds of web links that they, they offered to the residents and it was, I thought, a very positive meeting. And since then, I have gotten inquiries from residents who've heard about it, but were not able to attend, and I continue to pass the word. But basically, what we're talking about are either, depending upon the history of your property, how often it has been flooded and how many claims were, have been made historically, even before you owned the property, you could get anywhere from 100% funding to have your house elevated, or if, or if there was a history but not as bad as others, 90% funding. And then for everybody else, 75% funding, you know, if, if it's determined that your house meets all the, all the criteria they're looking at. Yeah, there are a lot of, right, there's a lot of information. I'm not going to, I'm not going to repeat the program, okay? I'm just telling you, it's a good program and there's ways to get that information. So, that was good. I continue to have Saturday meetings where residents are invited to come to my office right next door. They continue to be well-attended and it continues to be the case that stormwater issues and complaints and problems, along with walkover complaints and desire to get those things repaired and constructed, continue to be the top items of discussion. And I do sense some level of relief from residents who at least have someone to, to talk to and to listen to what they have to say. I think there's, so there is that. It's, it's even better if I actually have information to give them back, which happens sometimes. So, that part is good. I took last Saturday off from that to go to my daughter's graduation from college in Fort Myers, so, but I'll resume again this coming Saturday and that's all I have. Thank you.
Amigo? All right, so we have a couple of events coming up. There is a surf contest this weekend on Saturday, the May Day, the 13th May Day, Surf Memorial. And then the following Saturday, there's also a surf contest, which involves dogs. And that is all I got.
Okay, I was also going to talk about the workshops that Lee Richards did with Quality Engineering and they really were very well-attended, especially the first one. I'd like to thank Mike and the staff for, while it was a very long meeting last Wednesday, I thought it was extremely valuable and so, thank you for that. Fire Pension Board, Police Pension Board met yesterday. They're both still plugging along, doing pretty well. I was sorry to say that Robbie was going to leave the board, but guess nobody goes on forever. Memorial Day plans are made, put Monday, the 29th at 1:00 on your calendar. We have a speaker, thanks to the county Veterans Affairs Director. I don't know what I'd do without him. Excuse me. Pastor Janine is going to, from the United Methodist Church will do her thing as she always does. And we'll have the, not AMVets, who are they? Who are the military groups? I'm losing one. Not DAB.
There's VFW, AMVets, Knights, Legion.
Well, one of them is, the color guard.
It's usually Knights at Columbus, isn't it?
I'll tell you in a minute. I didn't, I just, it's not working for me. What, Penny?
Matanzas High School.
No, we're not using them. No, it's, one of the guys out on Old Kings Road.
What is the VAW for the VFW? It's on Old Kings Road.
They're all on Old Kings Road. Oh, come on.
Yeah.
Whoever it is, they'll be there.
Holding flags.
Of color.
Let me just try one, one second. Too many emails. Well, anyway, sorry about that. Okay, the reason I wanted to go last was Eric, if you ever talk to me again the way you did last week, there will be some kind of, I don't know what the repercussions will be, but no one in my lifetime has ever treated me the way you did at that last meeting. You weren't really nice and you came into the meeting clearly not wanting to be here. Your goal was to get out as quickly as possible. We had a goal for being here. You kept telling me that everything I said was unimportant, they had nothing to do with it, and whatever you could say that would get us out of here. And I've heard from people all over the city that how could you have that happen to you? So, it's not just in my imagination. Right from the beginning, very first thing that was brought up, you interrupted me right away so that we would move on to something else. You say something to the effect that we're majoring in minors. You spent a lot of time texting. I watched the meeting again. I didn't even notice you were doing that until I watched it on YouTube.
What does that have to do with anything? What does that have to do with anything?
You aren't paying attention is what it had to do with it.
Excuse me, I'm talking to Henry.
So, she's just going to critique.
You're not here for small talk. I don't think any of us had small talk. You may not have thought what was, we were saying was important, but we did. You are one of the group. We all get elected the same way. This year, you happened to be the chair whose job it is to move things along reasonably, but never to denigrate somebody in any way. The salary discussion seemed to be unimportant to you. You kept rushing and trying to get through it, and I'm sorry I'm reading here because I don't want to leave anything out. You have no idea. I did not sleep for two days after that and that is not something that is acceptable to me. You said something was Government 101 and it was a shame that you had to explain it.
That'd be salary range.
And you said to Rick that this isn't a social error, I'm not going to listen. You have no right to cut any of us off just because, I don't know where you thought you had to be, that could have been so important. We all have other issues in our lives. When we're told to, that we have to accomplish something at a meeting, that's what we come here for. It kind of started during Wednesday's meeting. I know it was a very long meeting, but again, I started to listen to that meeting because I kind of thought that you talked a lot longer than anybody else. So, I timed out the police department. I talked for a minute and 38 seconds. Suzie talked for 95, 95 seconds. James talked for three minutes, went three minutes and 72, you know, on the timer, on the thing. Nobody went longer than three and a half minutes, you went over eight. Fire department, we were all less than one, you were three, and it goes on from there. So, obviously, you think that whatever you have to say is more important than the rest of us.
Jane, if you're going to have an opinion, don't state my feelings that you're assuming is fact. You state your complaints.
Okay.
But don't make stuff up.
I didn't make anything up.
You just said, I think my thoughts are more important than other people. Leave that nonsense on the side, just state your concerns.
What you presented at both of those meetings last week was, we need to talk less so you can talk more. That is a fact, timing wise. I'm done. I just want you to know that you did not make a lot of friends over the way you acted, especially on Thursday, and I can't, I won't put up with it. No one in my life has ever spoken to me that way. Done.
Okay, thank you. So, there's an awful lot to respond to. So, the first thing is Thursday. I was in rare form, I was spitting fire. But however, number one, I don't respond to your threats. I'm not even going to hear it or entertain it.
I'm not expecting.
I think it's completely unprofessional, out of line for you to even do that and meaningless. Second of all.
I guess I didn't get my message.
No, no, don't interrupt me. I listen to you, so don't do it, as painful as it was. Secondly, I am thoroughly and completely uninterested in your armchair quarterbacking of the job I'm doing, so much so that your timing, how much I talk, if there was an issue on Wednesday, I would expect you to behave like a normal adult and say, hey, I feel like I'm not getting my fair shake and I would like to be able to talk more. I think you, whatever. It didn't get addressed, you're complaining about it after the fact, that's not how adults behave, so I'm not even interested in it. Thursday, me conducting business texting because I'm in the middle of my workday is frankly, none of your business, just point blank. And for all your assumptions that you had about how I'm not engaged, I didn't care about this, I didn't care about that, well, I didn't care about the salary range because I agreed with it. I don't need to do a dissertation if it's something I agree on, nor do I even have to explain it to you. The fact that I had to explain salary range, I found to be unnerving to begin with how a salary range even works. Now, I think what sets you, what set you off is my delivery on Thursday, because I was in rare form and I was spitting fire. And I'll be the first person to admit it. So, I, you know, to those of you that were at the meeting, that's not, that's not the usual Eric, I think you all know that. That was a, that was a rough day. I also feel that you have zero, absolute zero respect for anybody's time except your own. And it shows in meetings time and time again. These are business meetings, we're supposed to be all making a group effort to get through the material as quick as possible and that played into that, but I was in rare form anyway, so that part I want to 100% own. However, your threats and your critiques about the job I do and all the armchair quarterbacking that you are notorious for, you did, you've tried this with Rick in years past, you've tried this with the mayors, with the mayor in years past to tell us what to do and how you think we should do it, and frankly, I'm just not concerned about that. If there's a procedural thing that is getting missed or you are not being heard in a correct way, then I absolutely want to make sure that you do get heard because I have a lot of respect for you and I believe you do a really good job as a commissioner. And to make a, a statement where things really went off the track is when we, there was a discussion opened up about assumed consensus on the largest upcoming budget that we're going to be facing, and I found that to be just reprehensible to even be talked about in that meeting. That wasn't the place for it. And while you might be perfectly fine with having a consensus on massive budget increases without even knowing what they're going to cost, I am not. And with almost half the commission missing, to try to say that we had a consensus on something, which we clearly did not. something, which we clearly did not, that was where I kind of drew the line. But I agree with you on some points and, you know, I don't think that'll be much of an issue, but as far as like some of the other stuff, you know, that part I'm not interested in. And, you know, we can agree on some things and we can disagree on some other.
If we have policy issues, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, a lot of the things we're disagreeing on are subjective and I think, you know, it's the stuff that, that'll just, you know, solve itself moving forward.
We'll see.
Any other thoughts? Commissioners, did you have any thoughts that you wanted to share?
I was gonna say, I thought Wednesday's meeting ran very nice and fluid. We stayed on track. I did the math earlier in the day and I was a big concern that if we went five minutes over on each topic, it was gonna be an additional two hours. So I really enjoyed the format going into the meeting. We knew it was gonna be a very long day, we had packed it and I, I enjoyed the format and the business aspect of it.
Well, that was the stressful part, is that was a concern in the beginning of the meeting is, we immediately started going over by two, three, five minutes on each one and it's, with how late it had to go on the day, we, we saved a lot of time fortunately, but we didn't know that until the end of the day, but that was what created the really short format, plus we had very long presentations too, which took all the time.
I'd also like to add one thing for Thursday's meeting. I watched the meeting, I wasn't able to attend, I had a previous appointment. We are hiring, I want to point out, we have hired a company at an exorbitant amount of money of $30,000. They are the experts in the field. I have been an executive recruiter, that's what I was in my previous job. Let's also remember, we have potential city managers that are watching, that when we're micromanaging, I'm gonna use that word, a executive search firm on what they are the subject matter of, it's going to reflect on our city and how we act as a commission and we need to keep that in mind. We need to let the subject matters do what they are best at and I'll leave it at that.
Good point.
Commissioners, anything else? We have one more public comment period.
Oh, okay, that's right.
One more public comment period. Any members of the public would speak on anything under public comment? Nothing? All right, we'll close public comment and I'll look for motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we're adjourned.